Sheriff, are you ready? Okay, because Larry and the judge are not going to be here. Bob, could you get the door, please? The door? The one with what call meeting order, we have two of our members are out, so what was going on without them? So we'll ask Dave if he can do our prayer for us, please.
Thank you, Judge Proten. Good morning, ladies and gentlemen. Hope you have a good weekend. Hope you had a healthy weekend. And you will pray for this weekend. What I would like to do this morning, it's all I have for tomorrow. I would like us to stand, say the pledge, to remain standing, and will reside towards prayer together. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic where it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Father, I just thank you for this day. Thank you for these men and women, Lord. I thank you for the things that they do. But they have a hard job and get little pat on the back for what they do. But, Lord, I've been covering this county for almost fifty years, and I can say that we have one of the best-run county governments that I've seen. So, Father, I pray that you bless us today. Give them wisdom and guide them in Jesus' name. Our Father, who art in heaven, hallowed be thy name. Thy kingdom come; thy will be done, on earth as it is in heaven. Give us this day our daily bread, and forgive us our trespasses, as we forgive those who trespass against us. And lead us not into temptation, but deliver us from evil. Give us the kingdom, the power, and glory forever. Amen. Now may the Lord bless you and keep you, cause his face to shine upon you, and give you peace.
Thank you, Dave.
Yes, sir.
We haven't sat in this comm yet, but I'm thinking that we're also going to speak with Larry from the elections office. We might let Larry, we'll talk to him first, if that's all right. Jewel? Would it be okay if we let Larry speak first, and then he might have an answer to some questions?
Absolutely.
I know that. All right. How about the minutes from the previous meeting? Is there a motion to approve of? All in favor? I don't know if there's any treasures or auditors report.
Yes, there is.
Okay. For the consideration approval of any treasure and auditor's report, so you're going to give it?
Treasurer and auditor report for June 2020. And affidavit states, Commissioners Court states the requirements of subsection C of section 114.026 of Texas Local Government Code has been met. Treasurer and auditor have submitted a report to the Commissioners Court for June 30, 2020. Court has compared and examined the report and has approved it in the minutes. Attached to this affidavit is a two, a correct copy of the report, including a report of the cash and other assets in the custody of the county treasurer at the time of our examination in the amount of seventeen million, one hundred thousand, five hundred seventy-nine dollars, fifty-six cents. And it's approved by the Commissioners Court. And the report is in front of you, and it's labeled Treasurer's and Auditor Report for June 20. Therefore, I move we approve the affidavit and for the Treasurer and Auditor Report for June 30, 2020.
Motion to second. Any other discussion, I guess not. All in favor? I would actually move to Bill to hand. Problem with that?
That's fine.
Which brings us to seven A. Consider special approval action regarding the following. A was under Dr. Lydick's presentation, discussion, and possible action regarding approval of Brown County Child Welfare Board appointees. Jennifer Barberay.
I'm sorry, it's supposed to be Barbara Ray.
Barberay and Linda Mason. Presentation nominee by Ms. Judy Brown. Would I like to come forward?
That should be Brown Lady. Right here.
Okay.
I just wanted to thank you all for allowing me to be here and for your support throughout the years for the Brown County Child Welfare Board. The two corrections I was going to mention, that's Jennifer Barberay with a B. And my name is Judy Brown Lydick Lee.
All right. Sheriff, you got that?
We do have several of the board members here to support our two potential board members, so I'd like them to stand. Bill, members and potential board members. Glad to have been here and our other members to support them. We have a really good board at this time. We have fourteen members and our charter says we can have fifteen, so we're almost at full strength, which we haven't been in quite sometimes. So we're really pleased that we have that and have a very good working board at this time. I don't know if you can see my shirt, but it says, "Every child matters." And that's kind of sums up our mission, that we're here for children. Okay, our two new members that we're proposing. Jennifer Barberay. Do you want to stand up, Jennifer? You, the rest of you can sit down. Jennifer is from Austin and currently employed Grandma Disney Business Office. Before moving to Brownwood in 2004, she worked as a family law attorney. Worked for a family law attorney and was a mentor for students at Sanchez Elementary. While in Brownwood, she was employed at the Earl Chamber of Commerce and the Brownwood Chamber of Commerce as Director of Member Services. Jennifer attended Austin Community College and University of Texas paralegal training and is a thirty-year licensed nail technician. She's married to her husband Paul, employed at 3M Company, and has two beautiful daughters attending college at Texas A&amp;M and Troughton University. She enjoys anything outdoors, camping, water, and snow skiing. Jennifer feels the need to raise public awareness of child abuse in the land, recommend efforts and resources aimed at protecting children, strengthening families, and promote community involvement through activities that support the cause. And Lindy Mason. My name is Lindy Mason. I was born and raised in Arizona. I attended a hollow college and was a licensed massage therapist for several years. In 2007, I went back to school and worked as a relator until 2010, when I became a full-time stay-at-home mom. I married to my high school sweetheart of twenty-one years, and together we have five kids and a son-in-law. In 2013, we moved to Brownwood. I began volunteering with Brownwood Chamber of Commerce in 2014, and it truly found my passion. I have been an active member of ambassadors and youth leaders. I have served as ambassador president and also been ambassador of the year. I enjoy getting out and being served in this great city. I am also a new member of the Con Valley Quanis Club. In February of this year, I was offered a position at Innovative Wellness Health Spa in Arlington. I am the Office Marketing Manager. I learned how to give the fines and assisting them in their health treatments, as well as educating different community groups on the importance of healthy immune systems. I'm excited for this new opportunity to serve on the Brown County Child Welfare Board. My number-one priority and passion in life is children and the role of being a mother. I look forward to being able to be an advocate for the children of Brown County and getting to better serve the needs of them. Those are two nominees, Jennifer Barberay and Lindy Mason.
So they're all properly vetted, whatever you've got to do on that, so?
Yes, background checks, yes.
I move we approve the two new board members to the Brown County Child Welfare Board.
All in favor? Motion, pass. Would you all like a photo op for all your girls to get or somewhere before you leave? I don't know, I think you probably hope your rest and take a picture of it.
I think if we get right behind them, we'll be far enough apart.
He grew. They're going to have to. I'm going to have to either grow tall or taller.
Come on, step there.
Uh... Back, I would say, couple. Push that chair forward or out of the way.
Item B is presentation of award to the Brown County Historical Commission. Award, thank you, historical. Bob, the chair is going to be effective. Bob?
Sir, how are you?
Good.
Can you all hear me? I don't know, is it gone, Matt?
Yeah.
Okay. Well, maybe I can put it down. Well, first of all, let me say that Brown County has recently been awarded in this program that's been going on for fifty years in the United States. It's called the Certified Local Government Program. And to do that, it is hundreds of pages of documentation on your historic sites and places in your county. So the first thing is, I want to announce that through the efforts of this gentleman and Commissioner Treidwick and the county attorney, we have recently been named the eighteenth county in the state of Texas to be awarded as a certified local government. What that does is it makes us a partner with the National Park Service and makes us eligible for matching dollar grants from the National Park Service and Texas Historical Commission, as well as training and other assistance at no charge. So I think that's a good thing. So, having said that, and recognizing all the work that went into that, Brown County has been awarded a Distinguished Service Award for the 2019 year of service. This annual award confirms Brown County loyalty is for managing well-rounded history and preservation-related programs that enrich Texas communities. The County Commissioners Court, the County Historical Commission's governing body, presents the Distinguished Service Award and publicly acknowledges the County Historical Commission for their dedicated service. Signed June 10, 2020 by Mark Wolf, the Executive Director of the Texas Historical Commission. Thank you, sir, for all your hard work.
We come every year and submit our annual report that we send to the state. That's, they, from those, they compile that and see if we're following the guidelines and taking care of some of the suggestions that we're supposed to take care of. And I think there's just seventy out of the two hundred and fifty-four counties in Texas that receive their Distinguished Service Award.
Thank you.
Thank you. I don't think I need your picture, no media here to take it. We'll go to item C, is presentation, discussion, and possible action of donation to the Emergency Management Chaplains Service. That would be you.
Good morning again, ladies and gentlemen. What I have this morning as for your approval, we have a one-hundred-dollar check for the chaplains donation. Side group, whatever you want to call it. Anyway, I got a check to give to, I guess, to go to Anne. And it's from Terry and Pam McDonald. And that's in memory of Letha Ward, who died here several weeks ago due to a horse accident. What I would like is the approval to accept this donation. And is there anything else to add?
I think that's all there is to that. I would, I move that we accept the donation for the chaplain's service. McDonald's, I'm thanking very much for it. Got a second over here, all in favor? There you go. That's pretty sweet.
Yes.
Or Josie. Josie is holding her hand out, so I don't...
We need a chain of custody for them.
There you go, Anne.
Thank you.
Well, Larry, would you like to come up? Item D is presentation, discussion, and possible action regarding the purchase of replacement voter check-in system, ID badges for election judges, replacement USB modem phones for seven precincts without Wi-Fi, replacement batteries for the mobile ballot boxes for Hart, Intercivic, and online CERA training for Brenda Harp, Assistant Elections Administrator.
Good morning.
Morning.
All, well, with the exception of Bren's training and the regular office hours, these first real will be coming out of grant funds. I know that eventually comes out of our pocket, but this is something that we really needed. We are probably trying to save up for it. Things that have been going on is not that easy. First item here is consideration possible approval of purchase of replacement voter check-ins. The current system that we have right now, our PCs that were bought 2014 or 2015. The PCs have exceeded their useful life. The CMOS batteries are dying. And Matt and I have tried to get into one of them to see where it would be to replace the batteries. You have to completely take it apart, not only the back, but you have to take off the front, take out the keyboard to even get to the CMOS battery. I've got to plug them in about thirty minutes ahead of time for them to recharge, so that when I do turn on the computer, it knows it's the computer. That CMOS helps control the motherboard. If it's not charged up, it doesn't know it's the computer. I have a quote from VOTech, an amount of twenty-five thousand, seven hundred and eighty-eight dollars. This will come out of HAVA funding, voting equipment. It's, we're staying with the same vendor. VOTech has done good over the last, you know, five, six years. We trust them, and they've done a good job customer service-wise. So that's why I'm recommending that we do the replacement with VOTech for their voter kiosk system. It'll be a simpler check-in for the voter. They'll actually have a keypad that they'll sign, and we'll capture the signature online rather than doing it on combination forms.
How many of those units are you talking about?
Eighteen, sorry.
How many?
Eighteen, overall, eighteen precincts.
For each precinct?
Yes.
For each voting precinct?
Yes.
So we're less paper, which I?
Absolutely. I want to call it a sole source letter. Several years ago, they were on the state's by-board, and the by-board decided that since there's really only two manufacturers, Hart or No Ink and VOTech, that produce a standalone check-in system, all the others, you have to buy their voter registration system, and that comes with it. We're not buying a voter registration system. We have team that's provided for you by the Secretary of State, and so I can't justify funds to buy a new voter registration system. So these, the two standalones, VOTech is still PC-based, whereas No Ink is iPad-based. I've had discussions with Matt, and the PC route is the better, more maintenance-free route than the iPad. So we're looking to save money going the PC route rather than the iPad route.
But they're keeping getting further away from no paper trail. But then now I'm hearing some people think, now they think, well, I have a paper trail. I always thought we needed paper trail because, you know, we're onto a hundred percent of electronics.
We will be able to print out this list after, anyway.
After.
After these days, you know, if you want. But we will have a paper trail of voter signs.
Not really, because it goes to the electronics before it creates a paper. So, I mean, in my opinion, that's still, that doesn't matter, I guess. I just still don't think it's right, not having.
We will balance every day at the end of the day, so we will know that we captured them.
So, so you're asking now for the approval to purchase the, item one there? He's got five items listed in our item D, so we're going to take these one at a time, so? Is there a motion to approve the purchase of the, are they laptops? What are we going to call these?
It's a voter kiosk welcoming system.
Okay, but it's going to replace our current laptop system. For twenty-five thousand dollars, basically for eighteen years.
Twenty-five thousand, seven hundred and eighty-eight dollars for eighteen years.
Coming out of, coming out of the HAVA funds. So is there a motion to purchase these items? Have a motion, Rwayne Shaw, do you have a second?
Sure.
All in favor? Reluctantly, I'll vote for them, but I still think we need a sign and paper trail, with this in mind.
I understand. Item B, consideration of possible approval of purchase of an ID badge and system for election judges and clerks. Right now, we're using paper ones with the rubber band around the neck. Seems like I'm always having to make more every election. Cards, I've got Patty over the Sheriff's Department. And I think of all who knows all in C is all about badge and systems. She has been with ID Bill for several years and likes ID Bill better than the others. There are probably half a dozen that do badge and systems. But having worked with them for ten, fifteen years, she has stayed with ID Bill. She's even upgraded a couple of times through ID Bill. So, taking the role of, or taking her experience, I would like to stay with ID Bill. I don't have an exam, a map right now, but this will come out of the HAVA funding for security, election security. That way I have, you know, I know that all my election judges will have a badge, will have their picture on, so that they will be readily identifiable in the elections. Judges will have two. They'll have an election judge badge for election day, but they'll also have an election clerk badge for her, the elections offices, the judge for her. So I'm looking to spend between five and seven thousand dollars, again, coming out of HAVA funding for security, for the badges.
Just keep making badges around as you need them.
Right, right.
So what are you purchasing?
Well, it's probably the software, the hardware, badges that the hardware will print on.
Doesn't, don't we already have all that? Doesn't Patty?
Patty has all that.
Has all that at the sheriff's office?
It costs me.
You can't use hers.
At twenty-five bucks a pop.
How many election judges she have?
I, well, I have eighteen election judges for, well, no, I have thirty-six election judges for Democrat and Republican. Early voting, I had.
Why can't we utilize the sheriff's department's badge and system?
Well, that's what he's saying, is the sheriff's department is charging you twenty-five dollars for every badge they take.
I don't understand that, but we don't have any money from sheriff's department in here this morning. But since we already have that system, I don't, I don't see why you need or we need to purchase it again for the elections office. It just doesn't make, make a lot of sense to me.
How many people do you have, you said?
Well, ten folks times ninety days is, there's ninety, times ninety days is ninety folks there. And thirty-six for election day. Election office staff is four. It was one hundred and twelve when I heard it.
Roughly three thousand dollars worth if they're charging you twenty-five dollars a pop.
Why don't we revisit that when we actually have a price? Can we revisit, can we revisit this particular item when we do have a price?
Yes.
System.
Nail that.
And maybe we could have a discussion with the sheriff's department, maybe we get a better understanding that maybe it's more convenient than we realize, I don't know. Is that all right with you?
Yes.
Is that all right with you, Shaw? Let's pass on item two and maybe bring that back to us with some exact figures, and then maybe we could answer the other one. If that's, if that's good for you, all right. We'll move to item three, which is replacement USB modem and phones for seven precincts without Wi-Fi.
Correct, sir. It's funny, I got a email from Sprint, the twenty-sixth, I think it was, of June. Notice because selected device associated with your cannot be updated due to their age and outdated design. Actions required by June 30th to avoid service interruption. Well, we were fortunately treated in that meeting for the primary runoff. But I have seven locations that do not have Wi-Fi, and I use these modem phones for them to be able to connect and send back their check-in data live, you know, real time. Now, I do have problems with two locations, North Rivers Baptist Church and Zephyr. The concrete, or the rock building at Zephyr blocks the signal from the tower with the current phones. I'm hoping, and Sprint folks think that the newer design, more powerful, will be able to reach or receive the signal from the tower. And I'm contemplating probably next year, when it'll be an off year, going to vote centers. Vote centers are polling locations that you can go to and vote any precinct. So if I were coming back from Fort Worth and I was running late on election day, I could stop in May and vote in early balance at the May voting location. In order to do that, they have to be online. Because if somebody checks in May and then somebody tried, and they try to check in in early, then I would know that they had already checked in May. But that's why I have to have the reliability of, you know, a good phone modem in order to know that that person did check in rather than waiting until the end of the day.
Those are going to be Sprint. They're Sprint?
They're Sprint, sir. And we're staying on the same accounts. It's just, we're just replacing the hardware. Sprint lets me turn them on and turn them off, like it's called vacation mode. So during an election, I'll turn them on and we'll get charged the, you know, full price from the voter. But then after the election, I shut them off and we go back to vacation rates, which is not even ten percent.
So like in May, you don't have any Sprint service there, do you?
No, but I, the community center up there does have wifi. So in May is not one of the ones. I have Good Shepherd Church here in town, Early Citizens and Defense Center, Langley United Baptist Church, Zephyr Community Center, Pleasant Grove Baptist Church, Crossroads Baptist Church, North Ridge Baptist Church. None of those have wifi.
Okay.
And I think it's cheaper for us to go ahead and buy the mobile phones than just to buy mobile internet for those locations when it's not our location, which is a big, big control.
Okay. So item three, then, do you have a price on that?
One thousand two hundred and sixty dollars.
And that comes out of the HAVA fund also?
Uh, this is coming out of, yes, the CARES Act supplies mobile IT equipment.
All right. Do you have a motion to purchase the mobile phones? Did you ask for those phones?
Twenty-twenty, HAVA CARES Act.
I have a motion from Wayne Shaw.
Sorry?
I have a motion from Wayne Shaw to approve that purchase.
Yes, sir.
Do you have a second?
Sir.
All in favor? We have those items approved.
So can you direct, let my phones?
Yes. A phone stick that plugs into the computer. That's why they call it a modem phone.
Item four is replacement batteries for mobile ballot boxes from Hart and or Civic.
Well, there's two items here, there's replacement batteries. The normal life of their batteries, it's a battery pack of eight batteries. And their normal lifespan is, is five years. I'm, I'm there, I'm at the end of, for, yeah, at the end of five years, we had their Hart equipment for five years now. And so I want to get on a twenty-five percent placement each year. So I'll, I'll be getting thirty batteries, an amount of nine hundred and seven dollars and fifty cents. The e-slates, the equipment that you vote on, uses one battery pack. The JBC, which is the check-in, assign you a number for the e-slate, that one takes two. And so I figure a hundred and twenty batteries on the thirty-eight year. And this is just coming out of regular office supplies. But because it's a single purchase from Hart for, well, the MBBS are the mobile ballot boxes. These are the cards that actually plug into the JBCs and then for the DAU, Disabled Access Units. It has the audio for a disabled voter, so that when they turn the wheel, they hear what the instructions are on the page. But these cards, calculated, I have to have. Eighty-five cards in all, and so I'm going to be getting twenty-five a year. And those are sixty-six dollars each, the batteries are thirty dollars and twenty-five cents each. So this is a single purchase from Hart and or Civic. The MBBS will come to sixteen fifty, one thousand six hundred and fifty, and the battery packs are nine hundred and seven, for a total largest price of twenty-five fifty-seven fifty.
Nine hundred what?
Nine zero seven point five zero.
Battery packs are nine oh seven fifty and once, one thousand six fifty.
The mobile ballot box cards are one thousand six hundred and fifty, for a total of twenty-five fifty-seven fifty.
Costs lots of money to have elections done.
Unfortunately, yes, sir.
And that was all in the budget?
Yes.
Is there, is there a motion for the replacement batteries for Hart and or Civic?
So would.
Have a motion?
Second.
All in favor? All right. We got, we got that one. That leaves item five, which is online, CERA, whatever that stands for, Training for Brenda Hart.
CERA is Certified Election Registration Administrator.
Okay.
I have that rated now, I'm, I am a CERA graduate. These are courses that are taught by Auburn University. I have been to Florida twice to give ten courses. And it usually starts on a Saturday and it goes through Saturday, just for five courses. Because of everything being shut down because of COVID- nineteen, we're going to be able to get eight courses online for her, in the amount of twenty-three ninety-two, two thousand three hundred and ninety-two dollars. And this will get her eight of the twelve courses that are required for the basic CERA education registration level.
And that should be paid from, what fund is that one coming from?
I'm paying for that out of my travel expenses, travel line item.
Any other questions on that? Is there a motion for them?
I move we approve the training, CERA training for Brenda Hart.
Do you have a second?
Second.
All in favor? Larry, that gets taken care of all but that one item, I guess you can.
Yes, sir.
Figure out some numbers and reschedule that. Oh.
Yes.
Before you get away.
Yes, sir.
So there was a question about what ballot boxes will be open and what for the general election, just next week.
November third. Well, tomorrow is our primary vote, primary runoff.
Right.
And we're only voting at the elections office. We have one Republican race and two Democrats. And, you know, I visited a gull a month ago and we were set up with this. And I couldn't justify twenty thousand dollars to open up the whole county for three races. We last, or back in twenty eighteen, we had one Democrat race and we did the same thing, we voted at the Hall of, you know, election day, it was at the elections office. Back in twenty sixteen, our research to, to, you know, anticipating the question, in twenty sixteen, the runoff, we had a federal, state and local races, we had five races in all on just the Republican ballot. And in that situation, because we had federal and state and local, we went ahead and opened up, you know, the whole county. But twenty fourteen, it was back to, we had two Republican runoffs, two Democratic runoff, and we had it all through elections office. So it's just, you know, it's a matter of cost justification. Now, granted, I've heard on the radio that they were planning about a million three to be spent for the building, we won't spend twenty thousand for election, but I didn't, I didn't have the money for the building. It wasn't the entire thing. I'm, I'm trying to save, you know, some tax money. Okay. And on this COVID money, I know it's eventually tax money, it's eventually coming out of our pocket, but these are items that, you know, we desperately need to keep the office functioning.
What, what you said about a month ago?
Yes, sir. I had, I had come to before commissioners, but for something else.
Right, you know that day, I just know there was someone, or some few people in the minutes, and I didn't know what day it was.
I'd have to go back to the book, sir.
But it was a ballot month, yeah?
Yes, sir.
So were you actually on the agenda to get it approved to have just at the elections office?
Not approved.
Or is that just a decision that you made?
It was a decision I made, I was here for some other approval, but I notified the.
So it possibly won't be in the minutes?
No, but I think it was, it was, it would have been on the agenda. So at least I know what date I was here. I was here for some, you know, get approval for something else, might have something ahead, I don't remember what it was. But I did notify a vote permission report that election day was only for the elections office.
Would you do that and open court?
I know, we didn't, the commissary court didn't approve it.
Oh, well, I should have, we should have it on the line. It should be online.
All right. All right, thank you, Larry. Well, we had a.
All right, for the, you know, go ahead. We're getting heat from the outlying precincts that are on plan, they're being disenfranchised because I'm not having an election at their site. This isn't the first time and it's, it could be the last time. And I lived in Brook Smith, it was twenty miles to Walmart, and we didn't go to town every day. We, you know, kept lists and once every week, every two weeks, or at least every two weeks, I came to town. And I can't see why not come to town in two weeks. Well, and plus, they could vote by mail, ballot by mail, most of the people that called me and claimed they had over sixty-five. I sent them applications to ballot by mail. But the complaint was, well, I've always voted in person, well, and come during early voting, it was two weeks, you got to come to town once in two weeks.
Well, we talked about it at court, I forgot about it too, because I was going to go vote at home place in R. Two, but I get that one.
Right, it's only going to be here at the elections office.
But it was a decision you made, not.
That's correct. I informed the court that I made.
Did we inform the public? Did we inform the public that it was so?
It's on our website, posted in newspaper and on the radio.
Okay, so it's been published, it's just. I had it timed, I didn't, that's what I, I didn't know. All right, thank you, Larry.
For something I didn't do.
All right, we did have a public participation. We have a public participation form here of jewelry.
You didn't bring that for the commissioners' court, they didn't vote on it. It's all you.
It was a decision you made?
Yes.
Anyway, so as I was trying to say, we have a public participation form to speak on an item that's not on the agenda, so we would have to agree to allow commissioners, you know, Shaw, we'd all have to vote to agree to allow them to speak. So I guess the first thing, do we all allow him to speak? Yes, yes, okay, so you've been, the commissioners agreed to allow you to speak to an item that's not actually on his business, so you have. Five minutes, but we can't respond, sir, we can only listen.
Check-in system is going to be a HAVA. Badge system is also a HAVA.
I'll take the opportunity to speak today, since we're talking about elections, I'll just pull it right into that. This past Friday, on the radio station one of two point three, early morning talk show, Larry France, election administrator who's here, was interviewed pertaining to the Tuesday runoff election. I thought a senior director, by a phone, to avoid my concern about a single polling location, which is going to be compounded this time without a doubt by extreme July heat, which in turn will result in voter suppression, whether we like it or not, it will be voter suppression. And our rural areas and particularly our senior citizens are going to be unfairly affected by this decision. I relate for comparison to that morning, the polling locations for counties in District Sixty. Well, Brown County, we've got one. All right, Calleytown County's got four, Eastland County's got six, Hood County's got eight, Palapinto County's got eleven, Stevens County's got five. I understand we're number two in the largest county in District Sixty. And then the two smaller counties, Shakkaford and Coleman, they are one at the courthouse there. So that covers all the counties involved. I made it clear that I was well aware that the voting location would not change, that was not the reason that I was even calling in, but hopefully that this would never happen again. And I did encourage any voters that might be listening that morning to persevere the circumstances in voting the runoff. But later in the program, this is what really bothered me. It was related that the decision to limit the polling location to one was done by the commissioners' court, knowing full well that that was wrong. That is why I'm here today, because that is totally inaccurate. And we started being discussed at this point. I don't, but anyway, the state of Texas, just for anybody that's listening, y'all probably all know this, I'm probably preaching to the choir, but it directs that counties have an election administrator. And that election administrator serves at the discretion of the election commission, which is made up of five elected officials within the county. And that being the Democratic chair, the Republican chair, the taxes assessor and the county clerk.
Yes.
And the county judge, who according to the website that I looked on, he serves as the chairman of that commission. All right, the county elections commission is ultimately responsible for seeing all elections in the county. And I was hoping that Judge Liddy might have been here, I don't know if he could have responded at all, but I think in some future day, he needs to update us on any regular meetings that were called, or, I mean, that were had or any call meetings for the election commission and address in polling locations that was done on this particular voting and then getting in pictures. But I, that is what I wanted to bring before the court and clear the air because of the fact that it was incorrectly reported that morning that the commissioners had done it. And I certainly didn't want any connection with that kind of a reporting. And that's all I had to say, but I do appreciate y'all giving me the opportunity to speak to this.
Okay, we cannot respond to that, but thank you.
Thank you, Joe.
That's correct, right, that's all we can do on that one, okay. We did not have, we need to release this one, though. The health department that's out here today, she may not have been notified, I'm not sure. So we'll go to item F, which is action, possible discussion, action on the burn ban.
I'm in favor of staying on.
I'll concur, so there's no action, the burn ban stays on. Item G is Commissioner Shaw, presentation discussion possible, action regarding an application to install a private line on County Road three twenty-nine by the Zipper Water Supply.
Okay, we got new residents out there needing water and, uh, across County Road three twenty-nine, which is a Leech Road, it'll be a cut, it will be done up to county span, so I'm likely to approve this application.
Have a motion?
Second.
All in favor? That was done? I need to sign that. All right, I'll do that. Item H is going to be Commissioner Trewood, presentation discussion possible, action regarding an application to install a private line on County Road one eighty-three by the City of Bangs. But Shaw is going to prevent that from happening. Oh, you got it, I'm sorry, give him.
Commissioner Trewood asked me to present this, it's a water line on County Road one eighty-three by the City of Bangs, and I'm, I'm not sure if it's in the city limits of Bangs or, or what, but it will involve a cut, and this is a Leech Road, and it will be done by, up to county specifications. So I move we, we approve the application to install private line by the City of Bangs on County Road one eighty-three.
All in favor of that? Okay. Which I'll find a paper to sign for you one of. Okay, I'll get there. I will go back to item six, which is the payment of the bills. Have I skipped anything else? No, six is it, I believe. So we're down to bill paying. I'll pay bill to turn you out of.
That's right. Go there and copy these.
Second.
All in favor? All three of us. So the next meeting, what do we got? You know, just here, we need to meet next week or? Need a motion? I'll make a motion, which aren't until July twentieth, trips, I am. All right, we're done. However, I still got a last piece of paper to give.
Well, I've got to get it for you.
Okay, and, and do we already match the one back?
Yes.
I have to hand it back.